I ask for a moment of silence again at the beginning of the meeting. Margaret Pittman, a woman, a good Samaritan. She was struck and killed while assisting an accident victim on Thursday, May 30, on East Paris. She was a City High Grand Rapids Public School parent. Our thoughts and prayers go out to her and her family. At this time, I ask you to join us in a moment of silence to recognize Ms. Pittman. Thank you. Will you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ross, when you are ready, if you could please call the roll.
Ms. Lanier.
Present.
Mr. Moody.
Present.
Mr. O'Connor.
Present.
Dr. Randles.
Present.
Mr. Ross, President. Ms. Slade.
Present.
Dr. Baker.
Here.
Ms. LaGranne.
Yes.
President of the Fall.
Present. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So much.
Support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Some excellent celebrations tonight. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam President. I would ask Ron Gorman to come up front, please.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Education members, Superintendent Neal. I am very honored this evening to present to you one of the Gates Millennium Scholars for the 2013 school year. We had two Gates Millennium Scholars this year, Kalab Mamal from Creston High School and also Tanyé Brown from Ottawa Hills High School. Tanyé cannot join us this evening. She's out of town before graduation, but we're hoping to recognize her at a future meeting. If you don't know much about the Gates Millennium Scholarship, there are 56,000 applicants every single year. They take those 56,000 applicants and they get that group down to about 1,900 applicants. And then after 1,900 applicants, they give 1,000 students the Gates Millennium Scholarship. And the Gates Millennium Scholarship pays for a bachelor's degree, a master's degree, a PhD, all of your food, room and board, everything.
Wow.
So when you drive on the west side of Grand Rapids and you see this young man's picture on a billboard next to lots of money, because John Helmuth was very creative with the marketing, I told Kalab, you really did hit the lottery.
That's right.
But it's hitting the lottery with lots of hard work. And we're, this is all about Kalab this evening, but I just want to tell you his story as we move forward. Mr. Wilbon and I have both had the pleasure of being Kalab's principal. And on October 15, 2009, he and his family came here from Ethiopia. And on October 17, 2009, two days later, he became a polar bear. And on October 17, 2009, Kalab could not speak English. Okay? And Kalab learned to speak English by the help of his teachers, the very talented staff at Creston High School, various novels written in English, and also American films. So four years later, and when you, when you hear this young man speak to you this evening, you will, you, it'll be very surprising to you that four years ago, he could not speak English. We are very happy to announce that he is also the valedictorian of Creston High School for the 2013 school year. And he is a first-generation college student. So we're very, very proud. There's also someone I'm very proud of this evening, and she usually, she doesn't want all of this recognition, but I'm going to make sure that she gets it. In five years at Creston High School, and I just told you how difficult it is to get this scholarship, in five years at Creston High School, with help of Ms. Maya Frazier, who is behind me, phenomenal master counselor at Creston, she's had four Gates winners.
Wow.
So as much as Mr. Wilbon and I would love to take a ton of credit for this, we know that it's the teachers at Creston High School, that Creston and the Grab Set program, parents, mentors, phenomenal counseling staff, and we're just so happy to present to you this evening Kalab Mamal. So Kalab and I talked about, I'm so sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. We talked about four things he'd like to share this evening. We would like to share with you the application process, because lots of individuals feel it's something you do very quickly online, and there's much more to it than that, how he felt when he was notified, the school he is going to attend, and his future goals.
Do you want me to go over there?
No. You speak into this mic.
His PV camera is looking at you.
Absolutely.
So first of all, thank you for having me this evening. Let me just start by telling you more about myself and my family. I came here to the US three and a half years ago approximately from Ethiopia, I'm from Africa. We came here as political asylees. My family, my dad was here before that, and he brought the whole family over. Again, I attended Creston on the 17th after two days I came to the US. And it was hard for me at first getting accustomed to the culture and the education system here in the US, but with great support from the staff, students, friends that I've made, I've been able to speak English fluently as well as, well, be a valedictorian today, so I'm proud of that. I'm gonna start by telling you more about the application process of the Gates Millennium Scholarship Program. It is offered to, every year, 1,000 scholarships is offered by their program, and this year, 54,000 applied. I heard about it due to Maya Frazier. She gathered all of us, I believe, in my junior year, and everyone who was qualified back then. We had to add a 3.3 above GPA, and she gathered us, there were approximately 20 of us, I believe, and she informed us about this prestigious scholarship, and we all applied. And I think 15 nominees were present from Creston, 15 people applied from Creston. And how I basically did it in brief, I heard about it during my junior year, and so during the summer of my junior year, the application started, it was opened, and there were eight essays, eight personal essays, where some of them would be, what are your goals, or, sorry, what are your goals, or what subjects you've struggled, what subjects have you excelled in, and so on, and so eight essays, just like that. Also, the scholarship requires volunteer hours. I've had about approximately 20, sorry, 500 volunteer hours since ninth grade. I was a volunteer at the, I was a member of the Key Club Program, Key Club Nationals, and through that, I volunteered at the Grand Rapids Western Home as well as elementary, kindergarten, and middle schools here in Grand Rapids. The scholarship also requires leadership roles from every student in order to qualify. And I was the president of the National Society of Creston High School for this year, as well as a member of the PLT, the Principal's Leadership Team at KCC, the Kent County Technical Center, as well as a member of the Key Club Nationals. And so these are really basic things they would really require, and they want vivid descriptions on the work that I have done, for example, as volunteer hours. I've had to tell them in brief details, and this is mainly about the scholarship process. I'll pass on to how I felt when I heard about that I was a Gates, well, scholar. And it happened, the mailman sent, brought the package by the back door instead of simply leaving it by the front where I usually pick it up. And he said, he said though, you better go back there and then look something up, there's something that is for you. And so, well, okay, I said, and then I brought it, I packed the package, and I knew that I was a winner, one of 1,000. And I did not cry, or got too happy, but many people did. My sisters, my mother was very joyful, very cheerful, because both my parents are newcomers here to the US. They had attended some colleges in Ethiopia, but it's not an accredited system, so I'm essentially considered a freshman or a recent student from my family to go to college. And with the scholarship, what I plan to do, well, I plan to go to U of M to study biochemistry as a major, but I might change that, I don't know. I want to focus in physics too, so bio-physical chemistry perhaps, but also, I'm gonna start at U of M this summer. Yep, and so that'll be all.
All right. Good job.
And the essays, there were eight essays, each essay was 1,000 words.
Wow.
So eight 1,000-word essays, 500 hours of community service, and everything else that went along with that. Okay? Do we have any questions at this time?
It's impressive.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I have to say, as a former English teacher, it is even more impressive that you are new to the English language and that there was such a heavy writing component to that scholarship. I mean, that is wildly impressive, so it's fantastic.
I don't have a question, but I do want to, you know, support what you said and really give some praise to Ms. Frazier back there.
Yeah.
And the, you know, the years of interacting with all your staff, they've all been wonderful, but Ms. Frazier in particular always really is there to help out, provide clarity, and speak frankly, and really just a joy to be a community partner with, so thank you, really. Never had a chance to say it, but.
Good job. Good job.
Thank you.
Impressive. Wow. That's wonderful.
I feel like a proud mother.
Wonderful counsel.
Wonderful, wonderful.
So I'm loving this artwork. I'd like, I'd like it to stay here.
Yes.
I walked in, it was beautiful.
Love it.
My second report is with Dr. Brian Gam, and I would ask that he come forward, please.
that we're here to celebrate the Language Artist Program with the Grand Rapids Public Schools, which really represents a unique program in several, several ways. First and foremost, it's a celebration of our students. It's also a celebration of the integration between the arts and our literacy curriculum. And then finally, it's really a celebration of a unique partnership between the Grand Rapids Public Schools and the Grand Rapids Art Museum. And I can speak personally and say that they are a wonderful group of people to work with. And over the last several years, this program has evolved to really be a model of what can happen in terms of partnerships with our external community. The Language Arts Program is designed specifically for third-grade students, although we have been expanding that program. It's where students work with their classroom teacher as well as the art teacher in working on a compare/contrast piece of writing, while also studying art, and then also creating a creature that they then write about in terms of the specific genre of compare/contrast. With no further ado, I'd like to introduce some several people who will be speaking tonight. Joy Udine, who is our, the Docent Council President. We also have Marilyn Crawford here from the Graham Life Trustee. And then we have two wonderful students who'll be speaking tonight in terms of their presentations, Vivian Carmichael and Sarah Jespersen. So with that.
My name is Joy Udine, and I'm a docent volunteer. And on behalf of Graham, my fellow docents, I'd like to convey our sincere appreciation to the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education for allowing me time this evening to celebrate another year of Language Artist Third Grade Unit of Study. As a docent, I have had the privilege of being a part of this program from its infancy and see it develop over the past three years into what it is today. The collaboration between three important Grand Rapids institutions being the Grand Rapids Art Museum, or Graham, Kendall College of Art and Design, and the Grand Rapids Public Schools is an example of what can be achieved when individuals are focused on the same goal and resources are positioned to deliver. Graham and its docents believe strongly in the importance of literacy and education. In fact, many docents are former educators. It has been our pleasure to be able to promote the skills of using descriptive language while comparing/contrasting animals from two different art movements, to resolve a problem, to resolving a problem that animals are encountered with as illustrated by a sculpture. The development of sentence structure using a painting as a source topic. In working with these young students, we strive to ignite a spark of excitement in learning through art that they can carry with them across all areas of their study. It has been very gratifying to see the results of the Language Artist Program at the end of each year when the students' work is on exhibit at Graham. The creativity in writing and illustration that each student displays shows that the work put into this program by each institution, as well as each student and their teachers, has certainly paid off. Thank you.
Okay. I'm Marilyn Crawford. I'm new at this, and I'm going to do this without reading it if I can, so. I'm honored to be here to represent the trustee, Board of Trustees of Graham, and actually all the members of Graham, and to tell you how happy and how grateful we are to the central team, central office team, get that together, especially Brian Gam and Roseanne Wall and Maggie Malone, because I know the time and effort that they put into doing this, along with another team of educators also. But to give Graham the opportunity to reach all the third graders, the elementary school third graders in this district. And I just have this little story because long, long ago, and we won't go into that how long ago it was, but I was a docent that took art talks into the schools, and we would get these humongous portfolios and stuff them with everything that we could, and go into the classroom, and you got there, and you realized how little that you had to share with them, and yet they were, you know, that Graham had so much that they could see if they were there. But we tried our best, and the children were so enthusiastic and felt free to ask questions about all kinds of things, and worry if somebody else didn't agree with them and everything. And it was really just not, I hope for them, but not only for them, but for us who took the talks in, just wonderful. And the only sad part about it was, we all knew that we couldn't bring as much as we wanted, and we couldn't have the time to reach all the children that we wanted to reach. So this is a thank you to all of you that have worked so hard to give us a chance to share this with the students. Also, Graham has always sought to bring programming and tools for the teachers and things to work with, to bring these things into the classrooms, to help students of whatever they're in, whatever subject they're doing, but to achieve, to be a student achiever. Because this day and age, you know, how you feel about yourself, a lot of it is to do what you can achieve, and I think in art, you can individually, you know, it's not like two and two makes four. You can make that picture into any funny kind of animal that you want to do. So again, I want to thank all of you who has given us the opportunity to do this, and very exciting and very looking, very much, we are looking forward to continuing this wonderful partnership with the people who have made it possible for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm the Language Arts Consultant for the Language Artist Project, and I'm also a former Grand Rapids Public School literacy coach. It is my great honor to introduce our two amazing finalists for this year, this evening. Our first finalist is Sarah Jespersen, and she's gonna have to wait while I just talk about how amazing, some amazing comments that she made as we worked together. She had some words of wisdom as we talked and prepared for the Graham celebration on May 15, and also for tonight's presentation. First, Sarah explained to me that she used a thinking map to plan her beginning, middle, and ending of her story, but that she had some pretty good ideas right then about some details she wanted to include, so she used sticky notes to write them down so she wouldn't forget them. For any of us who have taught writing or loved to write, or loved to read children's writing, we know that this is amazing. She's amazing. Next, she said that from looking at her artwork, she knew exactly what she was going to do for her problem and solution in her narrative. There were no trees, and her creature was part giraffe. You're going to have to listen to how she set that up and solved that problem. Finally, Sarah told me that her story was created by, quote, "interacting her actual life with her made-up ideas." We just can't teach it any better than that. Here's Sarah.
Hello, my name is Sarah Jespersen. I go to C.A. Frost Environmental Science Academy. My teacher's name is Mrs. Kondalak, and my art teacher's name is Mrs. Ford. I'll be reading my story first, then I'll read my compare-and-contract piece, The Jerdolph. A long time ago, there was a mythical creature called the Jerdolph. The Jerdolph was part giraffe, part turtle, and part flamingo. It lived in deep rivers and high mountains. The Jerdolph has a heart green shell, a long yellow neck, a fluffy mane, four flippers with hooves, and a long red tongue, a long red tongue, and a soft pink tail. One day, when the Jerdolph woke up in the beautiful sunshine, he was surprised, all the trees were cut down. Jerdolphs get very hun, very hungry very fast, and cannot go very long without eating. The Jerdolph knew this, so after a little bit of thinking, he decided the best thing to do was go out and look for leaves and trees somewhere else. He traveled across deserts and through jungles and faced many dangers. While on his journey through the desert, he encountered a snake and was chased. He decided to face his pursuer and turned around. He opened his mouth and grabbed the snake. He whipped the snake, and the snake went flying through the air for miles. "There goes the snake," the Jerdolph thought. As the Jerdolph continued on his journey, his flippers ate. He went as slow as a snail, rumble, rumble, in his belly. It was now the third day he had traveled. He was so famished, but in the distance, he could see a farmhouse. He noticed a farmer coming out of the barn door. Now, Jerdolphs don't, do not talk much, but this was an emergency, so he forced himself to speak. "Hey, farmer," yelled the Jerdolph. "Hi, I'm a Jerdolph, and I am very hungry. Do you have any apple trees?" asked the Jerdolph. The farmer replied, "Yes, right over there." The farmer told the Jerdolph he could take as many apples as he wanted. So the Jerdolph walked over to the orchard and decided he'd only take one tree a year. He wanted to be polite and not greedy. So thanks to the farmer, the Jerdolph was never hungry again.
Now, I will read my compare-and-contract piece. My artwork, the Jerdolph, my artwork is called The Jerdolph. The Jerdolph is part giraffe, part turtle, and part flamingo. My painting, The Jerdolph, is similar to passenger pigeons nesting, because both paintings have water in the background. They are also alike, because the pigeons and the Jerdolph both have soft feathered tails. Another similarity is the paintings both have richly colored sky. My painting, The Jerdolph, is different, because in my picture, there are no trees, and in passenger pigeons nesting, there are tons of trees. My picture is also different from passenger pigeons, because Louis Lumen's picture is more realistic, and the Jerdolph is more abstract. Another thing that makes our paintings different is in Louis Lumen's picture, the painting, the pigeons have soft feathered wings for use for flying, and the Jerdolph has a hard, rough, heavy green shell which does not let him fly. Those are three similarities and three differences between passenger pigeons nesting and the Jerdolph.
Wow. Nice.
Our other finalist this year is Vivian Carmichael. While working with Vivian to prepare her for her presentation, I told her how impressed I was with her story after I had read it. And I asked her, is writing your favorite subject? And she said, well, yes, I like writing, but art is really my favorite and what I love the most. I asked if this story was better than her usual writing, and she said emphatically, oh, yes. And I asked her why she thought this was the case, and her answer was, and I quote, "I put lots of details in my artwork, and then it increased my writing variety. I saw the fruit in the artwork, and I used that as part of my story. Instead of just a river, I added rocks and fish, and used those details to create my problem and solution. I feel like doing the art first really improved my writing." End of quote. Well, I got goosebumps. Unsolicited, she had stated the exact reason this project is so powerful. Here's Vivian.
Hello, my name is Vivian Carmichael. I go to Grand Rapids Montessori. My teacher is Miss Betsy, and my art teacher is Miss Maddox. I am going to be reading my story first, and then my compare-and-contract piece. Ava's Lunch. Ava is a dever. She's a deer slash beaver. Ava has a deer head and a beaver body. She has long antlers and a beaver tail. One day, Ava was walking through the forest with tall, beautiful trees. The smell of the ripe fruit made her taste buds tingle. When strolling by the river, she saw the tasty fish and said, "I'm hungry," with a sigh. Ava liked fruit the best, so she tried to reach it off the trees, but she was too short. Then Ava tried to get the fish, but they zoomed away so fast before you could even say noodle. "Darn, I can't get fish or fruit," Ava said angrily. She sat there and thought. Then Ava said happily, "I could get Kelly the giraffe and Buck the duck to help me. Kelly can get the fruit because she is tall, and Buck can get some fish because he is a good swimmer." So Ava walked to Buck and Kelly's house. She said to Buck and Kelly, "Can you please help me to get fish and fruit?" "Sure," said Buck and Kelly with a smile. So they set off for where the fruit is ripe and the fish is tasty. Kelly got some fruit out of the trees with her tongue, and Buck caught some fish from the river in his bill. "Here we go," said Kelly, handing Ava some fruit. "Here's the fish," said Buck. Ava asked them excitedly, "Do you want to have lunch?" "Yes," said Kelly happily. "Sure," said Buck with a smile. So the three friends set off, I mean, three, so the three friends went to Ava's house and ate lunch enjoying each other's company.
Now, here is my compare-and-contract. My dever and Louis Lumen cross's birds I view of passenger pigeons nesting have some similarities. One similarity is in both pictures, there are lots of trees. You could even say it is a forest. Another common feature is both pictures have water in them, and both pictures, you can see brushstrokes. Here are some dissimilarities in the pictures. One obvious difference is my animal is a hybrid of a beaver and deer, where in passenger pigeons, they're just pigeons. I made my picture out of all different types of materials and cost-used oil paints. Passenger pigeons is more realistic, and mine is more abstract. As you can see, there is a lot of similarities and differences in our pictures.
Do you have any questions of our two amazing students? Or any of us? Or any of us?
I really wanted my art to be, like, I wanted to have lots of details, and I wanted my animal to be, like, have lots of details of them. And so since deer have big antlers, and beavers have tails, it's more of a detail because that'll make me have more time to make art.
Well, at the zoo, I liked most of the giraffes because of their long necks, and I really wanted to include something with my actual life, so I decided to put the giraffes in because I think they're just fun, like, how tall they are, and sometimes they have really long manes, and I just really liked them most. And for the mixing colors on the violet field, I just really like violets because it's my favorite color. And I just really interact in my actual life with my ideas.
Good job. Nice job.
I'm John Carfagno. I'm the Director of Education at the Grand Rapids Art Museum, and I also wanted to say thank you to all the great staff members and board members of Grand Rapids Public Schools for allowing us to work with you in this manner. We have gifts for Sarah and Vivian. One of the things about the unit of study is there are two mentor texts, Eric Carl's Mixed Up Comedian and Diane Carroll's How Art Is the Animal. They're great books, so we want you to be sure to have these. And in just a moment, Christopher Bruce, who is our school programs coordinator, is going to give each of you a custom set of postcards that features this year's Language Artists Works of Art, so we hope you'll write some notes on all of those.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And in just a second, we are...
You gotta get better flies or something because this is so much more vibrant.
I'm hearing it's the projector.
Thank you, Dr. Powell.
But we do encourage everybody to come down to Graham to see the real thing. The works of art are currently on view in our Education Center gallery, and they'll be up for several more weeks, so we encourage you all to come down and check them out. And Graham is also joined today by the entire Education Department team, our executive director, Dana Freese Hansen, and several of our other board members, Patty Betson, Elizabeth O'Shaughnessy, who all came out to support Vivian and Sarah and the works of art. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you want to quickly shake hands with the board members? Is that it? So I do not see our student representatives. And do we have any cards for public comment and non-agenda items?
I'm a celebrity.
Fantastic. Beautiful. Mr. Ross would like to speak.
Good job.
Good job.
She just came.
Love it.
Adorable.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
We're gonna do the budget if you want to stick around.
So our student representatives are not present, and we have no cards for public comment on board agenda items. So we are on to secretary's report. Mr. Ross.
Just a couple of things going on in GRPS in the next week or two. Coit is having a creative arts musical on June 12. The musical will be Annie this year, and the shows are free, performances at 1:30 and 6:00 p.m. on June 12 at Coit's Creative Arts Academy. And also, back-to-school celebration, this is obviously coming up in August, for the annual back-to-school celebration at John Ball Park Zoo from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. That's on Wednesday, August 7. And of course, Mr. Hemhold will release more details during the summer. And the third deal coming up this year is Creston High School All-Class Reunion. It's gonna be a picnic from every class, Ms. Lanier, and of course, Ms. Neal, for every class and Creston faculty, and that includes me then, I suppose, from my one-year work in Creston. It'll be held at the River Bend Pavilion in Riverside Park on Saturday, August 3. So all Creston alum and faculty, please mark your calendars for that. That'll be 11:00 to 3:00 p.m., and lunch will be at noon. More information, you can email crestonreunion@gmail.com. That will be it.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. It is with pleasure that I would like to introduce Dr. Tom Haas from Grand Valley State University to share some of our latest.
It is tough following kids, though. The young man who is representing, and I like the West Side connection. That was okay, too. A young student like that, it's tremendous. Well, thank you for the invitation, ladies and gentlemen. I do appreciate the opportunity of coming to you and sharing a little bit about some collaborations that have been going on. Actually, it struck me back, I've attended, I think, six out of seven. I'm in my eighth year as president. And it struck me, when I went to the SOS, and I've gone to six out of seven this past time, I was just curious what we were doing as a university in partnering with the school system. Of course, very proud to have one of our alums as the superintendent as well, and so I was really curious. So I set it out and said, "Okay," to the vice presidents and then the provost and to the colleges, "What are we doing?" And then I shared it with the superintendent, and it was, actually, in my mind, it was remarkable, actually, to see the connectivity that we have with you all. And let me just share a couple of these, or some bullets. I actually had emails like this that came through, but just a couple of things. And of course, the most recent collaboration with Grand Valley and GRPS and Covenant House, creating opportunity for students that might be left behind in many respects, and I'm very, very proud of the connections that we have here in that particular one, especially in light of, at Grand Valley, we are the number-one authorizer in the state because of high standards and performance. But the partnership there is going to, I think, reap benefits for students that might be left out, and so I'm very, very pleased with that. But to go on, let me just give you a couple of snippets, and then I can open up for any questions that you might have as well. One very personal one is Harrison Park. I go over there twice a year to read, and Harrison Park School is the same school that I went to in New York City, Public School 22. That's Harrison Park. I grew up in the West Side, on Staten Island, maybe, you know, on Arianna Street. I found homes just like the homes in my neighborhood. So I just love going there, putting my sweatshirt on, sitting on the floor with the children. And last time, we did a reading that reminded me of my granddaughters. And so, yeah, it was. It was very personal in that regard. And so, that's just one example that I felt very much connected then to the children, to our parents, because after I read, parents came into Allendale with some cupcakes for me, and that was really, really special. So I think it took a lot of courage for them to venture forth, too, out of the West Side over to Allendale as well. But just to give some examples, we have Grand Rapids Public School faculty attending some professional development workshops. We have the Johnson Center Community Research Institute, research available to GRPS. I know that some of you have visited over in Detroit together with us, with the charter schools that we have there, spent some time with Teresa early on as she was rolling out, because I live two blocks away, so it's real close. I can come over here, and we can visit any time. And one thing that, it's not ready yet, but it's close. And so, we are working with the foundation, and I want to remove barriers, financial barriers, to qualified students from GRPS to Grand Valley State University. And that's really, really close to coming to fruition, and I do. I want to remove those barriers. I'm a first-generation student myself, and I know what that means. My folks didn't go to college. My mom made it through fourth grade. So, you know, that, to me, is gonna be one of those things that I am looking forward to, and I know Dana Seeger and I, and working with you all, we're that close. So that's gonna be coming, that's a pathway, really, that's gonna provide us additional opportunities to help our children succeed. And of course, I was personally involved with working with your predecessor and others with the gear-up work that we were engaged with, too. But here are some examples in terms of the division. Our College of Liberal Arts and Sciences with the Regional Math and Science Center, we have summer camps for children, we have promoting reform in math education, proving teachers, and literally dozens of individual faculty members giving a time in writing, math, communications, modern language, chemistry, geology, just from that particular college. And the Seaborn College of Business, we have the Van and the Global Trade Center. I remember each year coming and seeing about 150 GRPS students coming to the capstone on World Trade Day, interacting with the students there. And we have the Entrepreneurship Summer Academy coming up with our Center for Entrepreneurship and Innovation. And the Community and Public Service College, we have the Johnson Center, Believe to Believe, and networking opportunities for your faculty and staff. The Criminal Justice Faculty, they're giving some expertise in terms of some skills in dealing with absenteeism. Also with Schools of Hope, pals, mentors, reading, and other engagements at Coit, Harrison Park, Dickens, Sibley, and Marcia, and my wife is here, too. She goes to MLK Academy from time to time as well to engage with some of the students. In fact, my son is in the Air Force. He flies F-15s. He came and gave some of his time while he was on leave, visiting us, and we went over to, with the kids, an MLK as well. He has a story to tell. You can engage students when you have big jets and pictures of them, and then tell them that when he was a cadet at the Air Force Academy, he was even jumping out of them, too. So he got their attention, and that was kind of fun. College of Education, which is significant, again, just significant engagement. In fact, this was, I thought was interesting, there's 1,500 hours of instruction for students, and there's some special ed programs. Schools that are touched by the faculty include Stocking, Creston, Union, North Park, City, and others. The Trio Program, which is really close to my heart as well, with Ottawa Hills and Creston, Montessori, Westwood, Riverside. In fact, Westwood Middle School reminds me of Junior High 51, where I went to in New York. And then there's others, there's a connection with Broadway, Grand Rapids, a symphony, civic theater, and other types of cultural opportunities, too, that we can work with. And one I'm very pleased with is that's the Woodrow Wilson, the one dealing with the STEM teachers, and we have actually about 60 faculty that have been engaged in that, students, really, in the STEM program. Health professions, we have had numbers of students looking at our healthcare program. Brooks College of Interdisciplinary Studies, significant efforts in sustainable community development and initiatives there. I love the young lady talking about where she was going to school, that was really neat. Continuing education, we've had International Night in the Kirkov College of Nursing. There's partnerships with GRPS through Spectrum and some of the Westin Schools, Community Health. We've also engaged with some simulator training, too, up on the Hill. So that's just, kind of, just a broad range. You can see the eclectic nature of where those engagements are. And I think what really came to my mind, and Teresa and I have spoken about this, is it is all about the kids. It is all about the kids, and us at Grand Valley want to be a good neighbor. After all, we call this home collectively, and think we have a particular responsibility at the university to engage and help, where we can, to help you succeed, help us succeed, and fundamentally help the children succeed. And, you know, I think we all, as educators, and that's what I am in my heart of hearts, is that we need to be and continue to be the stewards of the place, the place we call home. So I just wanted to share that with you, and I do appreciate the opportunity of bringing that to bear. So questions that you might have?
Yeah. Maybe from a distinguished alum?
I don't know how to distinguish, but I am an alum and a West Sider. Yeah, just thank you for all you do. It's great, being a West Sider, the investment Grand Valley is made in those neighborhoods, and the connection, you know, it is such a cornerstone of our West Side and the interaction that GVIC plays with all the successes that we've had there. It's very personal to me, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, but the West Side, and as you know, we're also engaging now in the North Side of the Ford Freeway as well, as we look ahead, maybe some additional health-related programs there, too, so we'll engage. I have a wonderful individual with Pat Alt, who makes those connections, and, you know, at the end of the day, if you need me, you need any one of my staff, as you look strategically out to the future needs that you might have, in whatever way that we can assist, we will be there for you and with you as well, so.
Thank you.
Do you have any data on how many students from the Grand Rapids Public Schools who graduated from high school that attend Grand Valley State University?
I can get that for you. I do not have that off the top of my head. But what we do see is we do have a number of students, more and more, actually, coming locally, very good quality students, as you can imagine, well, we're about 25,000. Just next year, I have over 18,000 applications for my freshman class.
Wow.
So it's significant. If you include the graduate schools, about 24,000, so. But we do have a number of students that come directly to us, and then we have a significant number of students because of our great partnership with GRCC. And there we have a great avenue for students from GRPS coming that way, too. But I'll get that for you, Pastor.
Yeah. I think it might be interesting for your counselors to connect with the counselors at the schools and do a recruiting to find students. I'm quite sure there's a lot of students who can't go out of state that Grand Valley would be an excellent place for them to go to.
And that's what I think, if we can remove some of those financial barriers as well, and I know we're gonna come to a great place to support those students, and we're gonna see more and more students matriculate over to Grand Valley because we'll remove some of those barriers. We are actually a pretty good deal. When we net out our tuitions, about $6,300, but if you can net that out to zero, that's even better.
That's right.
And we're seeing students graduate from here and others that have, you know, economic-challenged neighborhoods from which they graduated from, and we have a philosophy that we might have 25,000 students, but each one of them has her own story, and we make sure that we can help them continue to tell that with our support.
And my son is a Creston High School grad and an alumni of Grand Valley State where he received his master's.
Oh, thank you, sir. All righty.
Thank you. Thank you so much for taking time and coming. Really appreciate it. Look forward to stronger, growing partnership at Grand Valley.
There's no doubt that we're gonna be able to continue to do that. Really enjoy working with the superintendent and look forward to working with you all as well. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I would like to ask Julie Davis to come forward to discuss the budget.
Yes, before President Haas completely walks out, "Go Lakers." Right, each of you have, in front of you, have turned out of what we're gonna...
I would like to ask Julie Davis to come forward to discuss the budget.
Yes, before President Haas completely walks out, go Lakers. All right, each of you have, in front of you, a printout of what we're going to see on this screen. Sorry, no, I'm a little sidetracked. Each of you have a printout of what we're going to see on the screen here as well, that's easier for you to read. We'd first like to start off with some of our success stories for this current school year. We've received our most recent NEEP results, which were very encouraging for all the changes that we've been pursuing the system. At most grade levels, we've increased proficiency in both reading and math, which was excellent news. We also received our preliminary MME, the ACT portion. All nine of our schools improved their October 2012 baseline scores. If you'll remember, we implemented the EPAS system, or were testing the students, I believe, two times?
Three times for juniors, two times for freshmen.
Three times for juniors, two times for freshmen and sophomore, so that they're prepared to take the actual ACT in March of their junior year. And also, six of the nine schools remain the same or increased from their 2012 ACT, which again, was excellent news for us. Overall, our preliminary overall MME results, six of our nine schools had higher overall composite scores than last year's MME, and we have significantly fewer students that are in the lowest performing category. There are four categories. We, you want to be in one or two, and we moved a significant numbers of students out of the category number four, so.
For the sake of our audience, when you say six of the nine schools, you want to kind of expand on that a little bit? We've got a lot more than nine schools, so.
Of the nine high schools.
All right. I wanted to make sure that's.
That is a great, thanks, Ms. Slade. That is our high schools, our high school juniors take the MME.
So that would be Creston and Grapsetop at Creston. When you say six of nine schools, is that what you're?
That would include our Central HST, City, Creston, Grand Rapids, Montessori, Ottawa Hills, Union, the Academy for Design and Construction, U-Prep, and Southeast Crete Pathways.
Okay.
We've also updated our academic plan, or implemented an academic plan, and a couple components of that academic plan was professional development transformation. We embarked on a new way to offer professional development to our staff. There were multiple offerings on our PD days. For example, in February, we held over 50 sessions that served about 2,500 staff, so we were pretty busy on that day in February. Also a component of the academic plan is our evaluation system. We implemented a new teacher evaluation system that is consistent with the law. There were at least two classroom observations for each teacher, and that system is also connected to the professional development system. The area of human resources, we are continuing to transform that area as well. We implemented a new interview process for teacher placement. Principals are, were involved in the selection process. Teachers who were involuntarily transferred due to school closings, program changes, or budget reductions, applied for vacant positions. They interviewed before a panel that included the principal, the program leader, and in most cases, there were at least two other individuals that were part of the interview team. The interview was scored using a rubric. Staff were selected for these vacant positions based on their interview score plus their performance evaluation rating. Teachers who were not selected in the first round have an opportunity to apply for vacant positions that were posted most recently on May 30th. Last, but certainly not least, was our transformation plan, which, thank you for approving that and helping to move us forward as a system. Then we wanted to share with you our parent link, and what we are seeing, how we can get our parents involved, how we'd like to get our parents involved with their child's education. We all know that that's very important to the success of our students. Part of the transformation plan was school uniforms, so we are asking parents to ensure that their child is in their school uniform each and every school day. We are also asking parents to assist with the purchase of items such as facial tissue, crayons, pencils, and notebooks. We would really like our parents to attend parent-teacher conferences. This will give, in both the fall and spring, to give them an opportunity to see what is going on with their child and their education, so they can figure out how they're doing academically and behaviorally. To volunteer, I think it's critical for our students to see their parents in their school volunteering and helping out. And then we also ask parents to be involved in the Parent Teacher Community Council, or PTTC, as you might be more familiar hearing it, also with our PAL, or our Parent Action So our transformation plan, in our version 3.0 that was approved, we shared with you that our estimated savings for year one was a hair under $4.5 million. We also shared that we needed to reinvest a portion of that money. Our goal was to do, put 50% of the way into our fund balance and reinvest the other 50%. However, we also shared that in our first year, there's going to be a little bit more reinvesting, mainly due to our program moves and our space preparation, making sure that as our kids are moving around, materials follow them, technology follows them, areas are updated, some new paint on the walls, things of that nature. So what we have is, we're planning on saving about $1.5 million that we'll put into the fund balance, the rest will be used for reinvestment. I'd like to provide you with a very big picture of where our current year is coming in at. Beginning fund balance for this fiscal year is a little over $22 million, which represents about 14.6% of our general fund, general programs expenditures. Through our current budget, which is our Budget Amendment Number Two, we estimated spending a little under $5.7 million of that fund balance. As we're working through and finalizing numbers now, we're estimating that we're going to reduce that use of fund balance by about $2.5 million, leaving us with an estimated ending fund balance for this current fiscal year of $18.8 million, or 12.5% of our fund Looking forward to next year, and what is on its way to the governor to be signed, and how it impacts us, our budget, we will be receiving a $59 per pupil increase to our foundation allowance, which represents $994,000. We're projecting a loss of 700 pupils, a little over $4.8 million in revenue. There was a decrease in the MIPSers' offset credit, representing about $48 per pupil, so $840,000. They held the best practice in the performance funding, so at $52 and $40 respectively, but I wanted to reflect on here, because of the projected loss of students, we will see a little bit of a reduction in those areas. And then, as we've discussed before, in '12, '13, we elected to transfer $600,000 from our GRAS program. I need to pull that out as a revenue reduction, a revenue source for next fiscal year. So our estimated revenue changes for next year, our reduction of revenue, about $5.3 million. I do want to also point out, while it doesn't impact this right now, the small classified size funds were maintained at $109 per pupil. It was across the board on the original proposals from the three, from the Senate, the House, and the executive budget, so we're very happy and pleased to see that they maintain that at the current level. And also, they maintain the language for the special ed lapsed itinerant funding. That is money that we receive usually about in May, every year, and it's based on funds that went unspent in the prior fiscal year, and the state uses some formula and provides a funding to the Kent Intermediate School District, which is then provided to the locals.
Davis, if we have questions, would you like us to wait to the end, or?
You can ask them now.
I heard a question about the best practice. Is it expected that we'll meet those best practices? Is that a concern at all, that they may not be something we would adopt?
They tweak them slightly, and so we're beginning to look at them to ensure that we do meet them. I think they add a little bit more detail to a couple of the criteria, especially in the area of our online offerings. So we're beginning to look at that as a cabinet team, and to ensure that we are offering and meeting those seven of the eight criteria, so that we do continue to.
I have a question. How far is the foundation allowance?
It's on its way to the governor's office to be signed, and don't anticipate a change in that.
Ms. Davis, could you also explain that the MIPSers' offset in comparison to the foundation increase, that it's really just a, it's really only an $11 increase and not a $59 increase?
Right, yep, exactly. The, and what is being said, and what's shared, the document that was, came out of the House Fiscal Agency, is if you net those two together, for Grand Rapids Public Schools, we're really only receiving not $11 per pupil increase.
That's what I thought it was, so, thank you.
Yeah, if you can, if you can, for our audience, D-alphabet soup MIPSers, that'd be great.
Oh, thank you, yes, I will. That is our employee retirement system, so we are required to pay a percentage of every dollar that we spend in the salary area to MIPSers for the retirement system. What the state has done the last couple of years is, they've given us a little bit of money as an offset to the rate increases, and now what they have done with the budget that is going to the governor to sign, is they've reduced that offset that they gave to us as a categorical, what we call a categorical on a state aid payment, and have rolled it into the foundation allowance increase. So it went from just local school districts, who are the only ones mostly that are participating in the retirement system, it rolled it and went to open, so now it's more than just our local districts that are experiencing an increase.
And, and just for the sake of our audience, again, since I'm sure you can do the math, that translates to a whopping 0.02%, or less than that, in terms of our actual increase, correct?
Correct.
And last I checked, COLA was about, running about 2%, 3% annually. So in real terms, the state is giving us a 2% to 3% revenue hit here. We can be as grateful as we want that they haven't cut it any further, but in an inflationary economy, when you have that small increase, functionally, we've got a decrease coming from the state.
So what do you mean by the, what you were just saying about the offset is, could you just explain that again? The offset for was just local school districts, and now it's?
Yep, the offset went to local school districts and charter schools who participate in the retirement, state retirement program. There are a few charter schools that do participate. There is overall in the state in this current fiscal year, $155 million that were set aside in the budget to give to those who participate, and it was, the funding was based on your share of salaries that were a part of that program. What they have done is they've reduced that by $55 million, and that, those $55 million were used to help to support the increase to the foundation allowance. Foundation allowance is received by all charters and all local districts.
And the reasons that public schools pay into the, pay this is to pay for current retirees, people who've already retired, and so charter school employees are not paying into the current retiree system, even though?
Those who aren't participating, correct?
So essentially, what they're doing is they're stopping, helping us deal with our legacy cost issues, and putting charter schools at a strategic advantage over public schools. But that's the, but that's the shell game that makes it happen. Thanks.
All right, on the expense side, projected high level for next year, teacher reductions due to the 700, projected student loss is a little over $1.2 million. We are aligning our special education services to the mandates, so a savings of $2.6 million. And you'll see, this figure looks a little bit different than what was presented to you in the work session a few weeks ago. The figure that was presented to you before included a portion of that transformation savings, so I needed to pull that out for you, so that you could see truly what was transformation related versus special education mandate alignment. We have our GRA contract settlement, and while there was a change to the retirement system, and all of the members who participate had to make a choice, and their retirement may look differently for next year, and what they're contributing, there's still a slight rate increase, so we're estimating that will cost roughly $675,000. A few other increases, such as our insurance, our transportation, we're looking at around $400,000. And then there's our transformation savings, and that other reinvestment of the 1.5 that you saw earlier. So overall, we're projecting our expenditures will decrease to the tune of about $3 million. I do have a note on here, we have several employee group contracts, as you're aware, that are expiring this June, so we're beginning the negotiations process with those groups that is not reflected in here. And I do want to share one other note, because when we present this budget to you, we have learned, because there's a Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or GASB, requirement, that because the state is putting some money into the retirement system to help buy down the rate, if you will, so that it doesn't jump up to 30%, we are required by GASB to record that as an expense and a revenue. So when you, when we present the budget to you, you will see, you're not going to see a $3 million reduction in our expense if you pull up this current year to next year. You might actually see the expense increase a little bit, or it'll be a little bit less than the $3 million decrease. That's because we have to show both the expense and the revenue hitting our books. The state will make a payment to us through our state aid, our monthly state aid payment, and we'll have to turn around and within days, pay it right back to them. But I did want to put that out there to you, because it will look different.
Ms. Davis, if you could speak to that special education, that's $2.6 million. What does that translate to? What are we not going to be doing in special education next year that we're doing this year?
Sure, I'm going to ask my colleague.
I'd say it's a huge, it's a lot.
Carisita Long could come down and help join me.
We began looking at all of our programs and services from September forward, and specifically in January, we conducted staffings of each one of our students, particularly in categorical programs. What we had, we got evidence, we had, that we had assumed or presumed, is that we were over-servicing many of our students by jumping right from an initial evaluation for special education right into a categorical program, meaning that a student was identified as having a disability, and rather than providing accommodations and modifications within the general education classroom, we then put the student on a bus and shipped them to a classroom that served only students with IEPs. We were particularly using those, the programs for cognitive impairments for students that were identified as having only speech and language impairments. And it was really done with a very benign idea that these students need help, they need to be protected, et cetera, but we were really, not really helping them. The more, research is very clear that the more students are separated from general education, the less access they have to the general curriculum, the higher the dropout, the lower the graduation, the poorer the post-secondary outcomes. So we were very, very conscientious in our local programs to look at what students could participate in general education classrooms, and then providing supports there. But we were clearly over-servicing students. When Julie speaks about man, special education mandate alignment, we might have a classroom for students with emotion, with learning disabilities. Well, a paraprofessional is not a required service to provide, and yet we were providing paraprofessionals in many of our categorical classrooms, and again, not having students participate in general education. Also, when the district received ARA funds, some ARA funds were used to fund personnel. Well, the ARA funds went away, and the personnel didn't go away. So those were some of the contributing factors in our local programs. This also includes our center-based programs, where we This also includes our center-based programs where we, um, are looking, we, we revised, um, the program delivery model for our students with moderate, uh, cognitive impairments. Where, um, we looked at the Michigan Administrative Rules for Special Education and you have different ways in which to serve students, particularly the seventeen to twenty-six-year-olds. Um, we were servicing students, um, uh, fifteen students to one teacher and two employment training specialists, right? Well, the rules indicate that you can actually serve thirty students with one teacher and then one paraprofessional for every ten students, a different model. And by the time you get to seventeen to twenty-six-year-olds, these students are out in the community, the, the instructional program, the voca- the pre-vocational or vocational program looks very different than, uh, being in an algebra class, shall we say. So, that was also a contributing factor. We also found that we were using, um, a lot in our, um, uh, programs for severely emotionally impaired students, um, Kent Education Center, we had, um, a lot of staff, a lot of adults. Um, and yet, um, students weren't necessarily being successful. It seemed like every time there was an issue or a concern, it's like, if we add more childcare workers, we'll increase, um, the success rate and we were not finding that, um, in that there were so many adults that, you know, students weren't necessarily being, um, serviced in, in an appropriate manner. Those were some contributing, um, concern, uh, factors. We did, of course, because of transformation, we did close, um, schools. So, um, and we had a retirement that we didn't replace as far as administrators. So, we've had some admini- administrative reductions, we've had secretary reductions. Also by closing, um, say Wellerwood, um, and KEC Mayfield, reduction as far as custodial, secretary. Um, it, it all, it all was a, a good time, if you will, to just review, um, our practices and our, um, procedures in regards to servicing students with IEPs. That's a very rough and, and, and dirty, um, view of what's happened since, since January specifically post, um, the vote for, um, the transformation plan.
No, not at, not at all, that, that was an excellent answer, thank you very much. Um, you know, my concern is that that's a big number and we're in a public meeting and it's important that we explain this stuff and that we're, I mean, I really am glad and very reassured to hear that. I mean, I've got a daughter who's special needs and the last thing I want to see us doing is underserving children. And what you're telling me is we've got better models that are also saving us money and that's great. And I certainly know that my daughter would not want to be taken out of the classroom she's in. And, you know, she is really, really glad to be in the cl- in, in a mainstream classroom. And so, if we can keep kids in the classroom, that's great. And if, if we can manage to economize, that's great too, but thanks for, thanks for sharing that.
I just want to, uh, comment on one thing that Karrasita shared with us. Um, the two point six does include a portion of the center program savings as well. It would represent the GRPS portion. We, we, uh, fill about fifty percent of those slots, so I didn't want you to think the entire center program savings are reflected there because then there would be savings through our other local districts who participate in the area of tuition. So, now we have a summary of our projected two thousand thirteen, fourteen budget. If you remember a few slides back, um, we're estimating that we're going to end this fiscal year at about eighteen point eight million dollars in fund balance. Our amendment to use of fund balance was a little under five point seven million dollars. Revenue adjustments that we just saw and our expense adjustments that we saw, those, um, all together total a little bit under eight million dollars of estimated fund balance usage for the next fiscal year, leaving us at about seven point four percent or about ten point nine million dollars. Um, what this doesn't reflect and what we've discussed a number of times is that we do have general underspending every year. Um, we just can't budget for the underspending. We, we budget conservatively and we have a great staff who, um, don't go out and just spend their money just to spend it. They're really good about doing what's best for our students and only spending what they need, so.
Ms. Davis, that leaves us with an ending balance of approximately seven point four percent of general fund dollars. What is the, uh, what's the state threshold, the recommended is five percent, is that correct?
There isn't anything formal at the state level. Um, our plant Moran, our external audit firm would come and say it's higher than that. They would come to say probably closer to fifteen percent. Our board policy right now says ten percent of our general fund, general program expenditures or with a range of, uh, plus or minus five percent.
The state superintendent recommends seven percent.
Do you have any sense, Ms. Davis, from your colleagues across the state? Um, how many districts are falling below that five percent for their fund balance or?
I do, you know, it just came out recently and I have not had an opportunity to check because there were, um, the bulletins came out, um, the state bulletins to share where everybody was at and I just haven't had an opportunity to look at that.
No, Ms. Davis, one other question. Part of your, um, I mean, the, part of the reason we got our per pupil are whopping point oh-two percent, um, the state revenue conference came in and the estimations were generally positive, correct?
Absolutely, the, both the state aid and the, uh, general, state general fund revenues are a little bit more positive for this current year.
We can hope that the economy improves and they do that revenue adjustment a couple of times a year, so there's possibility of good news from the state maybe in the future?
Maybe in the future.
Detroit seems to be doing very well compared to last year.
All right, next steps for our budget. There's a board finance committee meeting that is scheduled next Monday, June tenth at eight AM here in this room in the board chambers where we will be presenting to the finance committee members, um, both the current year's budget amendment as well as next year's proposed budget. We will hold a public hearing the following Monday, June seventeenth, again here in this room at the board chambers at five thirty PM and then, um, pending approval by our finance committee, we'll be submitting, uh, to the full board for approval on Monday, June seventeenth at six thirty PM for the budget. And then we just want to take a moment to thank, um, those folks on this list and apologize if there is somebody that we did miss for all the work, heavy lifting, um, that everybody has done, the positive support, the request to be involved, um, it means a lot to us, it means a lot to our students and we just wanted to thank you all.
Thanks, thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Ms. Long, would you limp back down here? We, um, our action item and help us before we have a motion for this action item, if you could, or you, you know, explain to us what the Parent Advisors for Special Education is, thank you.
The PACE or Parents Advisors for Special Education is a mandated, um, um, group of, um, parents that represent, um, children with disabilities within Kent County. Um, and their role is indeed that of an advisory group and it is, uh, those meetings are held at Kent ISD. Um, each district, um, each constituent district, um, um, is allowed to nominate, um, and have it part of this group. Um, two parents, um, Grand Rapids being a little bigger, we're allowed three. Um, and meetings are held the first Monday of, um, every month at Kent ISD and it is an opportunity to share all the various programs and services that are available within Kent Intermediate. And then the parents have an opportunity to ask questions and, and learn about what's going on within special education. And it does require board action, um, as far as, um, nominating parents to, to represent Grand Rapids Public Schools, um, in this group.
You have any questions before I ask for motion, Ms. Long? Thank you, do I have a motion to accept the nominations as presented?
So moved.
Any co- any questions, comments? Take the vote, Mr. Ross?
Mr. LaGranne?
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Slate? Mr. Ross, yes, Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Mrs. Lanier? President Falk?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you. Our next action item is the non-exempt layoff resolution. Do I have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Comments? Mr. Ross?
Uh, Mr. LaGranne?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Slate?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes, Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Mrs. Lanier? President Falk?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you, and our last action item is for the purchasing agenda, to have a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Questions? Mr. Ross?
Are we purchasing anything?
Services.
I know, but it's like nothing, 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 nothing. That was just a joke.
Hoping you read your packet, Mr. LaGranne. You call the roll, Mr. Ross.
Uh, Mr. LaGranne Esquire?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Slate?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes, Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Distinguished GVSU alum, Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Mrs. Lanier? President Falk?
Yes.
Purchasing motion passes nine zero.
Next on the agenda is our consent agenda, motion, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
That we approve the consent agenda with the removal of the regular board meeting from May twenty minutes?
Do I have support for that?
Support.
Call the roll? Vote.
Minus, minus, um, Ms. LaGranne?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Slate?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes, Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Mrs. Lanier? President Falk?
Yes.
And I was minus minutes from which one?
The, um, May twenty minutes.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion that we approve the regular board meeting minutes from May twenty, twenty thirteen.
Support for that?
Support.
Discussion.
Um, in the minutes, it did not reflect that I had an excused absence and, um, I just wanted the minutes corrected as such.
Oh, I thought I did see it in there, that it was excused.
I saw excuse behind only one name and I thought it's usually after each name, so I wanted to make sure that, maybe I'm just misinterpreting how it's supposed to be written. Is the excuse under, uh, behind Dr. Baker's name? Okay.
The, the minutes reflect Lanier, comma, Baker, parentheses, excuse dash two. I didn't, I guess that would be a question for the secretarial staff.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know what it's been in the past, to be honest, but, so if that's what that means, then fine. If it doesn't, then I want it to reflect accurately.
So, do we approve the minutes for that change or?
I would put, I would put the change in there, that, to put the excused in there.
Behind each name.
Behind each name and then just as a practice, we can do that, absolutely.
So, do you amend your motion to approve the minutes with that change?
That, that was my motion.
Okay, all right.
If it wasn't, then yeah, that's the motion.
You want to call the vote, Mr. Ross?
Uh, Mr. LaGranne?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Slate?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes, Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Mrs. Lanier?
Yes.
President Falk?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda are two discussion items. First is the M A S B membership, uh, this is up for renewal, you saw that in your packet. Are there, um, any questions or concerns regarding that renewal?
Any change in the dollar amount at all?
I don't know what it was previously, do you remember?
It, it, I think it was around eight thousand, I didn't remember if it was the exact number.
More like eight and a half, I think, when it was said and done.
I certainly use their services quite a lot, so I certainly think it's a good thing to do.
Excellent. Uh, the next discussion item is our summer meeting dates. Uh, first of all, we have had a hold on the work sessions and neither the superintendent nor I feel that it is necessary next Monday to have a work session, so, um, barring any large protest, I would like you to release that hold for next Monday. Uh, secondly, we usually cancel one of the meetings in July and, um, we are proposing to cancel that first meeting in July around the fourth, so, um, barring any objection?
So, that's July one? July one, yeah, July one.
So, we would just have the one formal board meeting second or third weekend, third Monday in July.
When do we plan, a work session on the second Monday or decide later?
Decide later. In the August, August meetings as scheduled.
Tell me where I'm supposed to be.
You'll get an email.
Okay. That's all I want to know.
We're canceling the first board meeting in July as scheduled.
I was clear on that. We'll schedule it as needed.
Also, I guess I, I want to give, um, you a heads up for our retreat. Uh, Superintendent and I are going to put out some possible dates on a doodle poll and, um, hopefully we can secure those dates sooner than later than you can start planning for that. So, we'll get those out soon. Public comment?
Actually, um, just want to make a note, I don't know if you saw this,
I saw it.
That we do, for the, anyone that was watching and was hoping to come to the Academic Achievement Committee next Tuesday, um, we are not having it next Tuesday. It says canceled, but we will discuss and it, uh, an alternative date, um, at some point. So, either sometime in the month of June or July, we'll have another one, but we'll decide that at a later day, so.
Thank you. Public comments, we have-
Uh, Mr. Paul Helder.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Mr. Helder, would you like a one-minute reminder or?
Yeah, um, I don't know too, uh, I had some questions about the budget, I just saw just some things I didn't understand and whether or not that should be part of my three minutes or how that works or I can address them later or, I, I don't know, I just didn't understand why things like insurance, which was reduced, would be added to transportation costs. You want to talk about it later? Okay, yeah, I just didn't understand how some of those numbers were arrived at. Um, hi. Uh, just, uh, real quickly, uh, I know it's kind of the end of the school year, we're all kind of winding down to a certain degree, although gearing up for the next year, so I don't really know if there's much of a pace difference. Uh, but, uh, I thought it was worth pointing out just a few things that, uh, we have accomplished. Things we're happy about, things we're concerned about, uh, things that we're looking forward to and hopeful about. So, I'm just going to kind of breeze through the list because I know I have very limited time, uh, you know, which is not one of the things I'm happy about, but we'll work with that. This year, we ended the rotation of teachers in blended instruction and that was a great thing. Uh, we were concerned that, uh, this would remain an obstacle to relationship building and the mentorship, the teacher mentorship specifically, that, uh, research shows is so important to our students. Uh, and that was done and you're to be congratulated for that, thank you. We also ended the hub model, uh, which is great, concerned, uh, with the damage that this did to, to children and some of our arts and music programs, although I, I have to say, looking around the room, uh, I'm glad to see that it wasn't too much damage for long-term and looking at, uh, really building on that and, and improving that, uh, because what a lot of people don't realize is the arts are, are critical to developing math and language arts skills as well, uh, brain-based instruction shows us that. Transfers and vacancy, uh, while certainly we were not happy that the Republicans in the legislature stripped those rights from our members, uh, we are happy that the district chose to go ahead and allow our members the opportunity to at least have, uh, their, their voices heard in terms of saying where they would like to work. Um, certainly, we're concerned that, uh, the process that was laid out is not being, or it doesn't appear to be followed, uh, universally, but, uh, it's to be expected in a district this size and certainly it's a new program and we're hopeful that it's going to run a lot more smoothly next year. Attendance, uh, we ended the misconception that attendance does not matter, which was great, that was very damaging. Uh, a couple of former board members had some things to say about that, that were a little bit irresponsible. Um, we're a little concerned attendance still isn't where we'd like it to be, but, uh, we're hopeful that we're going to work on that and get where we need to go. Um, I would say evaluations, I, I was happy to hear that while I was out, uh, we are finally in compliance with the law. We have a policy and that's been a long time coming and, uh, I'm certainly glad we have an attorney who's taking that seriously and has moved that forward. Um, I, I guess as I read the policy, I'm a little concerned that it doesn't spell out what the actual process for evaluations is. I guess as I read the policy, I'm a little concerned that it doesn't spell out what the actual process for evaluations is. I think that would add transparency and certainly make it clearer for everyone. But I'm hopeful that, you know, over time, we can move that. And, you know, once we have a clear, fully transparent policy in place, you know, and that that kind of a thing is followed with fidelity, that we're actually going to be able to really move instruction by evaluating people accurately and fairly. And I think that's very important. As far as bargaining goes, we're certainly happy to have an agreement in place for obvious reasons. But with two years going forward, my hope is that this is going to allow us the time to really sit and work with the district on how we can get involved in real substantive school reform. For far too long, the voices of the people who are hired as the educational experts have been ignored in education and that's something we've allowed. And something that certainly the personality clash between former superintendent Taylor, myself, and anyone who ever talked to him probably did not help. That's probably the occasional jab at him probably didn't help either, which is my fault. Having said that, bargaining, for the most part, even though there were hiccups and having to feel each other out, it's over. It's running much more smoothly now. I don't know how many people realize this, but right now, we're currently bargaining priority schools, SIG schools, and next year's calendar. I haven't seen any real contentiousness at the table. Everyone seems to be working on the same page, just trying to figure out what we can do, which is great. And we may even have some of those things resolved by as early as the end of the week, which would be fantastic.
Mr. Helder, your time?
Over my time, am I?
You are, if you can make some concluding remarks?
Gosh and golly, things are better. Let's keep making them better.
All right, thank you. Superintendent's comments?
This is the last week of school and I really want to thank our teachers, support staff, principals, parents, and students. It's been a long year, we've had a lot of changes this year and I really do appreciate everyone working together.
Pastor Moody?
None.
No comment.
I just want to thank you to all the staff and building leaders in the building here, those I know personally and those that maybe I don't know as well. Just really a shout out to the hard work that you do and the commitment that you show daily and just really some sincere appreciation for that.
I'll go next. I had a, I had a really good GRPS day. Started out celebrating the boys' track team at Ottawa Hills, coming in second and breaking some serious records and seeing some very proud, handsome young men. It was thrilling. And then I spent a bulk of the day at Harrison Park and I have to say, it was, it really was amazing to see those kids, to see the score changes that are, that's happening, it's really happening. I mean, we knew it would and it's great to see it. And see some new leadership that's going to head up there and that's fantastic, so. And the partnerships that are at Harrison Park are really moving, so. It was, it was a good GRPS day, so.
No comment.
Last week I had a great opportunity to, I'm a member of the Grand Rapids Association of Realtors and I had a great opportunity to present with Mr. Helmuth to some of our friends at the Realtor community and I'm very excited to hear that our superintendent and our board president will be again engaging with the Realtor community next week to help tell the positive story of GRPS and continue to get the message out there, to know that the housing market's on the rebound. People are looking to buy, lots of young families are looking for their first house and just trying to let them know that Grand Rapids is a great place to live and to get an education. And so I look forward to continue to build that relationship with them.
Dr. Randles?
No comment.
Ms. Lanier is asked to go last, so Mr. Legrand?
Sure, a couple of things and I'll keep it quick. First, you know, we do a lot of congratulating and so I guess I'll just add one more. I really appreciate all the stuff that John Helmuth does for this district. He's a, he's a real talent and we're incredibly lucky to have him and every single time I work with him, I'm impressed. So, John, you don't get thanked enough maybe, or you can't get thanked too much given how well you're doing. And just to fill you all in, this is a time of year when we focus, I suppose, maybe inordinately on the kids who are done. And it was, but it was great fun, for me at least, to be at the city high graduation because I'm in the situation that I've got a senior graduating and I won't have a senior graduating again for a while, although I've got two more left. And it was fun to see Isaac graduate, but it was great to see that class and it's a really good group of kids. And I can't speak as well to other high schools, but it was great fun for me to see what a group of, what an impressive group of young adults they were and are and are becoming. And it was, it's been great to go to open houses and see all of those young adults and look at their futures with them. And as, on a final note, my son Isaac did in fact win assassination. And so I don't think we get a formal celebration for that, right? They're not going to bring him in and give him an award, but there was a, there was a pool going and there were eighty kids, so there should have been, seven times eight, there should have been five hundred and sixty dollars in that pool. In fact, there was twenty-eight bucks. Which didn't even pay for the gas. My son used to drive to Ann Arbor to kill one of his targets. He, he did in fact win assassination and he won most kills and he was the last man standing, even though his last opponent brought muscle and tried to tackle him in a parking lot. So, that's my comments.
His dad's got a pulpit to talk about it.
I'm done now, that's all.
And finally, Mrs. Lanier?
Thank you. Bear with me, everyone, I kind of have a story to tell you. Once upon a time, there was a lady who was appointed to the Grand Rapids Board of Education in October two thousand and seven by the then-board made up of Reverend Kenneth Hoskins, Mrs. Lisa Hinkle, Mr. David Allen, Ms. Arnie Smith Alexander, Mr. Luis Peña, Mr. Harry Campbell, Ms. Catherine Muller, and Mrs. Amy McLenn. She was chosen as their peer after sixteen applicants were reviewed and five interviews were held. She was excited, energetic, and eager to put all of her passions, gifts, experiences, and abilities to work well and work well with all. As a result of this appointment, according to the Grand Rapids Press educator, then educator Dave Murray, the Grand Rapids Public Schools made history in having a board with the makeup that had a majority-minority representation and more in line with the student makeup within. The lady continued her work and was soon elected to the board by the citizens of Grand Rapids in May of two thousand and nine to a four-year term. She was honored to have received the public support of the constituents. She was elected vice president to the board with unanimous support of her aide-colleagues, which demonstrated their vote of confidence in her leadership. She quickly realized her professional experience was going to be an asset to the board that was extremely fragmented and not working well together at that time. She worked hard at being a bridge builder, helping her colleagues to focus more on what's best for children and not their differences. As a result, the lady was unanimously supported as president of the Board of Education in her second year of her four-year term and third year of being on the board. She held this position for two and a half years. There was a lot happening in the district and it was clear what type of leadership strategy would need to be used to navigate the district through difficult times. She stepped up to the plate with pride, dignity, and grace and made sure that at all times she didn't lose sight of the nearly eighteen thousand students and their families. It's hard to believe it's been four years since the election and nearly six years since the appointment. So much has happened, such as, the district has undergone a strategic planning process that morphed into a phenomenal action plan, also known as the transformation plan. The lady always used the metaphor of being more of a fire preventer than a firefighter, which translated into we have to have a plan in place in order to make a difference in the lives of the eighteen thousand. Many community partners who were on the verge of exiting have remained great partners with the district and some of those partnerships have flourished and grown into great examples of what working together through difficult times, through difficulties can provide. The lady worked tirelessly to mend broken relationships and restore partnerships. The lady's support is in her, in fiscal decisions that helped GRPS to avoid, during these difficult times, to avoid an emergency manager as, as many of us have seen in some of the other local school districts within the state. The Board of Education participated in a number of educational trainings to build working relationships and recognizing roles and responsibilities. That was something the lady felt was necessary in being effective in working on behalf of the eighteen thousand. The lady created an ad hoc policy committee because she felt it was important, because she always was vocal about either the full board or a committee needed to do the main work, which was reviewing, updating, and adhering to the policies of the district. It's important to set the examples for the administration as well as our students. It's unfair for us not to follow rules when our expectation is for the eighteen thousand to follow them. So having policies that accurately reflect what, where we were at the time was essential. The lady heavily supported the local first policy and sought modifications to make sure it was local enough to give preferential treatment to vendors who were local, who were local, which was a way of giving back to those families of the eighteen thousand, hoping it would increase the chances that their families would receive contracts or work through the district and work with the district. The lady participated in advocacy on behalf of the eighteen thousand at the state and national level. For two and a half years, the lady co-chaired a city schools liaison committee with the mayor and discussed ways in which our services overlap and how we can work together through our joint organization, our community's children and other ventures like we are GR and recycling and so many other things. And not to bore you further with what else has transpired over the past six years, I would leave you with one of the most important works of a board, which is to hire a superintendent. And the lady was delighted to be a part of a team that hires Teresa Weatherall Neal. And she immediately knew she was, that Teresa was worthy of a contract and that would give her time to make the best change for the eighteen thousand students. Finally, the lady recognized and realized that her passions have evolved. Her calling has grown beyond the work within the buildings. There was an incident, for example, there was an incident where gunshots were heard in the seven o'clock hour in the morning. And after thinking about how that must have impacted the children preparing for school, she knew it was time for her to shift from within the schools to the city. Those who mentored her were very happy to hear the timing was now. She, she was well-prepared to take on the role of third ward city commissioner with the support of her family, her friends, current seated third ward commissioners Elias Lumpkins and Jim White, the city's mayor Hartwell, who is a former third ward commissioner, as well as former mayor Logi, who too was a third ward commissioner, to name a few. The lady is walking into being a part of history once again. If elected, she would be the first African-American woman elected to the city commission and first woman elected to the third ward. The lady's heart is heavy to the transition from this work, but she knows that with Teresa Neal at the helm, things will be okay. The lady is humble, the lady is excited, the lady is me, Sonia Renee Lanier. And with that being said, I'd like to submit this letter of resignation to the secretary of the board with an effective date of June thirty, twenty thirteen, which was the original term expiration date as, as I was elected by the citizens of Grand Rapids. Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.